Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, March 25th, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by ordering the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Deborah.
Mm-hmm.
Last night you asked me to ask David Stuckwish to have somebody present to present their findings from the air quality assessment at Churchland. And so I fired off an email and said, "Sure." And David's here tonight to make that presentation. You guys are welcome to come up.
It's snowing in the wind.
Good afternoon on this good, fine, warm spring day.
(laughing).
City manager asked if we would just come in and give you an update. We gave everybody an executive summary of the report on Monday afternoon. We received it late Friday afternoon. And that report goes, I don't know, 50, 60 pages. The executive summary pretty much sums up what they've done. If anybody wants to see the whole report, just let me know. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Steele, who is our Assistant Superintendent over Operations, and he'll be assisted by Dr. Robert Shepherd, who is our interim Director of Operations. They know best exactly what's going on at Churchland High School. But it's good news, the school is safe. You know, if you see the summary thing says, "School's safe," it's whatever. The little areas that we're working on are perennial leaks that we have in that building. We've talked about having to replace the system. You get one leak fixed, it leaks again, get another one leaked somewhere else, and that's pretty much what we're cleaning up. That is an ongoing operation in the high school. With that, Mr. Steele?
Evening, Mayor.
Hey, good evening, Council.
As you recall, back in February 24th, there were some concerns raised about the air quality of Churchland High School. On February 28th, we engaged a environmental testing firm called McKee Environmental Incorporated. And we instructed them to conduct air samples, do a number of different types of air samples that would look at airborne mold and bacterial levels, airborne chemical levels, ventilation effectiveness, and indoor temperature and relative humidity levels. And we designated specific sample locations throughout the school that we knew that were possible problem areas. And then also, they did kind of a random, based on a random sampling technique of other areas to get a representative sample. On tour, about seven days later, we started getting at least a preliminary informal reports from them. And based on some recommendations, the operations crew started actually reacting to some of the recommendations that had to do with cleanliness and things like that, even before the final report was issued. And on March 6th, we got the first round of air quality reports. The first samples indicated that the air samples were of acceptable indoor air quality in the areas that they tested. But there were a number of other air samples that took longer to culture as far as the bacteria to determine exactly what the levels were. And we got the final report, March 21st. I believe you received an executive copy of that. And like the superintendent said, we do have the full version of the report that's available for anybody to inspect. Again, the air quality was found acceptable in all the tests that they've conducted. There were, however, a number of recommendations that they made for improving the environment in the areas they tested. And we basically put together an action plan to address each of those areas. We increased the frequency of cleaning of certain things like air registers on our HVAC system that were identified to have minor mold accumulation that we were cleaning. And at this point...
But that's all standard, though.
That being any house, any building.
Exactly. But the overall assessment of the environmental testing firm was that we had a healthy building. So it met that criteria, and our levels were well below those levels that were deemed appropriate for a healthy building.
Now, did he get into the flow of it or just looked in the quality piece?
They did look at the flow, and they agreed that the school is a prime candidate for the major HVAC project that has been submitted for it, that can correct a lot of the...
Hot in one and cold in the other.
Exactly, exactly. And level those out. And I guess we're looking forward to those types of corrections. But in the meantime, this specific issue of air quality has been addressed, and we feel comfortable with the assessment.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Meeks?
Can you tell me where Mr. Nance got the information or why he would have said that in the public?
Let me respond to that. We work for the school board. I can't speculate where Mr. Nance got that from. Years ago, when this building was first opened, well before I was here, anybody hunting staff was there, there were some issues, I understand them. And there were some very major corrective actions taken at the school. But today, the school is, you know, we have continuous problems with leaks and so forth, as I've said, but overall, the building is healthy.
Okay.
You know, it is not a quote-unquote "sick" building. So I'm...
But you say that to the camera...
If I want to speculate, I always speculate that Mr. Nance is speaking to things that happened a long time ago.
In the past, yeah.
There is some issues there that he's speaking to, but those have been corrected as far as we can correct them with the current system that's in the building.
Okay. Another question?
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, David.
Any questions?
Good. The next item is update on the Midtown Tunnel MLK Extension Project. It's well underway, and this is to give you an update. No decisions for you to make, but we want to make sure that you're aware of what's going on. Jane?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Member of the City Council. Here to give you an update on the MLK Expressway Extension Project. Going to focus on three main areas. We're going to look at the properties and what staff is referring to as the MLK Expressway piece. Talk about three specific components of that, interstate, the utilities, and the main corridor. We're going to talk about the downtown tunnel tubes. Then I'm going to go over some of the challenges that staff has faced with this project. Just to give you a visual of the project, London Boulevard here, CSX Real Yard in the city compound. And if you can remember from earlier meetings, they're modifying the ramps here on London Boulevard, coming through the center of town. And okay, just past London Boulevard, they're going to start to elevate the expressway. It's going to be elevated over Queen Street, over High Street. Harbor's going to be closed as the main expressway comes down. Elevate over Turnpike, come on over to CSX Yard, and then tie in to the interstate here in the vicinity of the compound. And you see some other work down here next to Douglas Park, some up here in the Truption area along the interstate where they're doing some other tie-ins. So that's just to get you familiar with some of the activities that are going on in that project. So, I'm looking at the properties. 67 properties were scheduled to be acquired for this project. All 67 have been acquired either through condemnation or voluntary conveyance. And all the buildings, with the exception of one building, will be demolished within the next four to six weeks. Looking at the interstate, as you've all known, it's been driving around. Work is commenced on I-264 eastbound. DeMorn Avenue exit ramp has been closed permanently. They've already removed the pedestrian bridge over 264. But as part of the project, the pedestrian bridge will be coming back once they get a little bit further along towards the end of the project. And all that work on interstate is complete in that area. Closure of the eastbound Frederick Boulevard ramp, so they can modify that. Modify that ramp is scheduled for the second week of April. And sometime in mid-April, they're planning to close permanently the South Street ramp.
So these closures are right around the corner.
Right. The exception of the Old Dominion, do you know anything why that's the exception? Or are they building over top of it?
No, it's going to be demolished. It's just a scheduling thing.
Okay.
And so most other properties, they have to go and do the environmental and work with the person they're acquiring. So it may have just taken a little bit longer than other properties.
Properties that, let's talk about the properties that have been conveyed to VDOT. It says either through condemnation or voluntary conveyance. What kind of revenue did the properties that were conveyed generate? And what was the value on the properties that were acquired through condemnation?
We have that information. That was part of the, yeah.
That's part of it. You have it. Have it.
I was going to say, you gave us the earlier...
Well, let's send it back out.
About $3 million.
Okay.
What was the, I'm particularly interested in the condemnation, why they had to require it through condemnation versus sale?
Well, part of that was ours.
Yeah.
And remember, at that particular point in time, we were on one side, and they were on the other side. And so our position then was, don't voluntarily sell the property. And so they have put the money in escrow in the court, and they exercised the quick-take provisions. And George can explain that to you.
So the money, there'll be some money realized from that?
Yes, sir. Exactly. A little bit shy of $400,000, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
About $379,000 to be...
Okay. So we'll get reimbursed?
Absolutely.
At some point, huh?
And we were not quibbling over the price. I mean, they gave us a good price. It was the strategy.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Looking at the utilities in the MLK corridor, because of the court case, how they had originally planned to do the project has changed. And so now, a significant portion of the utility work is being performed in conjunction with the road work. So their schedules have shifted a little bit. But going through, here, you can see that we've approved several plans for utility relocation. And they're working in all these areas, with the exception of Frederick Boulevard, which I mentioned in a previous slide, that they're going to be closing here shortly. We're still reviewing various plans they have in this corridor for the water main along Harper Road and for the remainder of the 20-inch transmission main. The majority of private utilities, with the exception of the Verizon one that's currently going on on Harbor Drive, has already been completed. Okay. Looking at Harbor Drive, the reconfiguration of the ramps at London Boulevard has started. That current configuration will remain in place until the May-June timeframe. After this reconfiguration, traffic's going to be placed on the new ramps. And MLK between the ramps and High Street will be closed permanently as they start working on the main part of the expressway. Utility work with this one Harbor Drive...
I just have one question, because one of the things that we frequently run into when these transitions are taking place near heavily dense communities that will involve some change in configurations, how much input is given to the residents that are going to have to be either relocated? Because a lot of that involves some rental property in there, too, where people are going to have to be relocated. And I think it's good to get as much information out front rather than having to go back in to explain to those, particularly the senior residents that are left, you know, in some of those areas. The changes that are going to take place is going to definitely affect them.
Then, while they've gone through the process and acquired properties and those people that have moved, they have a part of their project team that's been working with those folks to help them find new homes. And I think we had discussed earlier at an earlier meeting to try to help those people find homes that are actually still within the city of Portsmouth.
And near their names.
And so that's been a part of the process from the beginning. They have a marketing department that has been holding, from what I understand, meetings with various groups just to keep them abreast of different parts of the project. And we do put glass on the webpage as far as certain key events that are happening with the project. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Okay. Lost my spot. Okay. Looking at the downtown tunnel and the westbound tube, rehabilitation of that tube is scheduled to finish in July. There will be some additional weekend closures in the month of April to install the jet fans. And also during that timeframe, there'll be testing, commissioning those systems. Looking at the eastbound tube, as you remember, it's similar work, except for the additional work in this tube, it's removing, removing those existing ceiling tiles. Same thing as the westbound tube, new fire protection system, new electrical system, new ventilation systems, and some structural work. So in May, they're going to start single-lane weeknight closures, and those closures are Sunday through Thursday from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And that part, when they're starting, is going to be to remove the tiles. In July and August, the full weekend closures are anticipated to start. And those closures are Friday through Monday from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And that is expected to start after the work on the westbound tube is complete. As you can remember from previous meeting, 42 weekend closures are, full weekend closures are in the schedule. Closures will not occur during holidays and major events such as Harbor Fest. Here recently, they've also offered us the opportunity to coordinate if we have some significant events going on, to try to coordinate our schedule. They're not making any guarantees, but the offer is on the table. So we're working to get them some events and dates to see if we can do some better coordination. Does the event include Intello's pavilion concerts? It can. Okay. It can. If we get the schedule of events, you know, that sort of comes as you go throughout the season, as they add shows. But as best we can, we try to get that information going.
I would think during that timeframe...
And see what we can do.
Do the Memorial Day Weekend Parade, the Umosia Festival, and any other events that we're booking over here in Intello's, just get it out as early as we can.
Some events for Intello's are already on their calendar. So hopefully, we can pass those on, so they make a commitment.
Yes, sir. Okay. There's some of the challenges that staff is facing as this project moves forward. It's cutting right through the middle of the city. So monitoring the changing traffic patterns, in addition to monitoring the truck movements, is challenging when you have, in that corridor, a lot of the signalization is older and hasn't been upgraded yet. So you have some systems that have video detection, and you can sort of accommodate that traffic. Then you have some that are fixed time, and so you're limited with what you can do with trying to coordinate signals to keep traffic flowing. We monitor traffic during peak hours in the morning, monitor it during peak hours in the evening, and try to make those adjustments as best we can. We actually do actually work with ERC as well to sort of help work that out. Another key piece is ensuring that the public has adequate notice of significant events so they can plan and adjust their schedules accordingly. And so that we can sort of develop our initial plans to see where we think trucks might go, where we think traffic might go, where we think those shifts are going to be, and then make adjustments as those patterns actually level out. Another thing is managing expectations. A significant project, you have tolls, and people are looking for different ways to get around the tolls, different ways to get through the city. We do the best we can to try to adjust signal timing. And as I mentioned before, some of the systems are older, so there are going to be some delays. There's no way around that. And that gets back to the constraints of the signal system in certain corridors. And the last piece of this project, unlike a number of projects that VDOT does within the city, where either VDOT does their project and they keep the infrastructure and maintain it, or VDOT improves a road and gives it, and then the city takes over maintenance, this facility will have three different parties with different maintenance responsibilities, long-term maintenance responsibilities for facilities and infrastructure. So there needs to be an agreement in place to clearly identify what those responsibilities and roles are at the end of the project. And so we've been working since the beginning of this project to get that ball rolling and keep that in everybody's thought, because we need to, like I said, legally define these property boundaries, identify all the features that are in those boundaries. And then there may be some opportunities to make some improvements within the city for some of those barren parcels, maybe landscaping or some other things. So those are some of the things that staff is working with ERC, SKW, and other people that are involved in this project. But the final agreement, because it's a design-build project, won't be available until construction is complete. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any question? Thank you.
Again, the pedestrian bridge is going back across. That's a Federal Highway Administration requirement.
Could we talk just a little bit about how we were informed about that? We got a lot of complaints with people, saying the first time they heard of it was when the police department put out a notification of the shutdown that weekend. And I don't think any of us knew.
No, I think it was in the presentation we did back in March of last year. I mean, remember, that was 56 pages? I mean, that was a big, big...
It was in there.
Yeah.
We just didn't remember when it was.
Pardon me?
We just didn't remember what time it was.
And probably some evolution of that significance of shutting it down is probably worth making sure we get a reminder, I mean, from them to us. So when we get phone calls and people wanting to know, "Did you notice?"
Now, is the problem that some citizens have brought to our attention over Newport?
Yes, sir.
Is that part of the MLK project, that equipment, the dirt being deposited there?
It's being stocked, though.
The dirt that's going over to Newport is coming from where they're working on the ramps, but technically, it's not part of the project, an agreement between one of the contractors and the folks out of Newport. So that's not an ERC. That's not an ERC. It's not an ERC thing.
It's a staging area, might be the best way to describe it.
Right. So what control, if it's negatively impacting that community, which certainly it appears that it is, what authority do we have to make them find a staging area that won't negatively impact that community?
We started, this came up last night, and we started immediately after that meeting working on this. We had been working on it. And you get down to some things, we just, if everything's permitted correctly, there's just some things you can't say no to. If there is, and I've used this example, Kenny and I were neighbors, and there was a ditch between us, and Kenny got a permit from the city to put a backyard pool in. He did his silk fence, but low enough, a hole in my dining room, there was a crack. My recourse is not against the city. My recourse is against Kenny or the contractor. And so we want to, we don't want to be in a situation where we're right, but we're dead right. I mean, we're concerned about the neighborhood, and we're concerned about the runoff. So we're looking at every aspect of this.
I mean, there's a permitting process...
Yes, sir.
...with that. And I would think that's where our leverage is.
Well, we're not only taking a look at the permitting process, visualize this. You've got the dirt pile, you've got a ditch, and then you've got a house. We want to make sure that the course of the ditch is open. The problem is, in our area, the tabletop is flat. And if I poured that glass, that bottle of water on top of here, it's not going to run off. It's going to stand. And there's not much fall between those houses and that ditch. There's hardly five inches worth of fall. And so you get a good rain like we've got, and water's going to accumulate, unfortunately. But we're working it. And it may get down to the point where everything they have done is correct, that we have no choice but to issue the permit. But George, can, George, did I misstate anything?
Sure. Well, you know, you'll have the, there's a distinction between a private nuisance and a public nuisance. And if this situation creates a hardship for a single property owner, then that's really something between the two property owners. We go through the permitting process, as the manager pointed out, and we do what we're supposed to do in terms of allowing the activity or prohibiting the activity, and then monitoring the activity in terms of whatever our responsibilities are. But at the end of the day, if there is damage done by one property owner to another's property, and it's not of a nature that a whole neighborhood's affected, or a large, where it becomes really a public nuisance, then that's something between the two property owners. But from, as the manager said, there's a lot of monitoring that goes on to make sure that things are being done the way they're supposed to be done, and also that if there are any problems, such as he alluded to, for, you know, possible runoff, that that ditch stays open so that the water flows like it's supposed to flow and doesn't back up because of some sort of impediment in the ditch. So it's really just a monitoring process.
I take it the property owner in question of the property where the staging area is probably getting paid for the use of that property. Is that correct?
I would make that assumption, too. Probably if I owned the property, I would ask that they leave about a foot's worth of dirt, too. I mean, having dirt on your property to fill in low spots is a good thing.
Good thing, yeah.
What makes it a public nuisance, as far as if the whole neighborhood's flooding?
Well, if it has a general application to more than, say, one person or one or two people, if it's...
In this case, it does.
My understanding is a whole row of houses is...
And if it's causing that problem, then there are ways to deal with that from a city standpoint. But if it's between one property owner or two property owners, and it's causing damage, and you have to verify that, in fact, the damage, that the problem that's being complained of does exist, because you don't know whether it's a pre-existing condition or whatever. But there are a couple of parties at this point involved in it. There's the person who's depositing the soil, as well as the property owner, who's allowing it to be placed there. And the responsibility and liability in terms of any damages rests with them and not with the city. We would be there to make sure that things were done the way they're supposed to be done in terms of a permitting process and a use...
But if it's impacting more than one house, it's a public nuisance, right?
It can become a public nuisance, yeah.
And then that's when we have authority to...
Well, we don't really have authority to do something...
Do we have, I mean...
I mean, you can go in and ask the court to abate the nuisance, and that takes time, too. So...
In fact, there's a section of the state code where any five citizens can petition the court to convene a special grand jury to look at a public nuisance. And that's been done from time to time. And typically, it's a pretty high bar to cross. The basic rule is, is that everybody's got to take care of their own water. And if, again, in my situation, if Kenny and I were, the mayor and I were neighbors, and I did, I blacktopped my backyard and threw all water in his backyard, that's my responsibility.
I'm not going to comment over if the mayor and I were neighbors, but look at it from a citizen's point of view.
I'm looking...
We permitted them to do, we gave them the permits, correct? They went through the permitting process to do this?
Some things you have a ministerial...
I get that.
Yeah, okay.
All right. You understand that, and maybe most people on this table understand that. If I'm giving to one of those four or five houses that's having this problem, I understand that. What I understand is, my city gave me a permit, they're now putting this dirt, and now I got a problem. So we all know there's always three sides of the story, the left, the right, and truth somewhere in the middle. We've got to get to the middle, and if we're not the middle people, we've got to help the people, help them understand...
And we're going to do that. We have a very big education component, just like I said.
And not just give them a lot of stuff to read. I'm talking about the recourses, the options, everything, because they've just been living there. And this just came and was thrust upon them. They had enough issues in the neighborhood already. I mean, they have issues, they've been having issues since I've been here.
They don't have to get a bomb...
One thing or another. So all I'm saying is, we need to provide all assistance we can to help them remedy it.
But we need to represent their interests.
Right.
We have a very big education component, just like I said, um, I thought my analogy...
And not, not just give them a lot of stuff to read. I'm talking about the recourses, the options, everything, because, because they've just been living there. And this just was, just came in, was thrust upon them. They had, they had enough issues in the neighborhood already. I mean, they have issues, they've been having issues since I've been here.
They need to get a bond.
One thing or another.
Saying across the street...
So, all I'm saying is, we need to provide all assistance we can, uh, to help them remedy it.
But we need to represent their interests.
Right.
Uh, and they were already being negatively impacted by the, uh, the dirt that'd been placed there by the Newport developer. It raised the grade above their properties. And, and now, it's gonna, it's gonna even be higher.
I want to give you the assurance that we get it. We had a long discussion about this last night. I mean, education is a big issue. And again, the fact that, like I said, if, if the mayor and I were neighbors, and the city gave them a permit to put the swimming pool in, and my property's damaged, my recourse is not against the mayor. It's, it's against the mayor.
Not the city.
I mean, it's not against the city. It's against the, my neighbor. And that, we understand that. In fact, we've worked hard today to come up with the plan going forward, and education is a big component of that. We, we get exactly what you're talking about. And my sympathy is, is where yours is. And I, I subscribe to the concept that we're the voice of the people who are not in the room.
That's right. That's why we're here.
I know, I know when we had, we moved the sand pile across from Victory's, the school. There was a sand pile there. I wanna say we had to put a bond up, uh, for damages. That's what the city required us on our, um, ENS plan. I'll get the stuff and call you tomorrow, but I, I wanna say that's what we had to do. That's the, I don't remember all the pieces, 'cause it's been a while, but the sand that was across there, I think we worked with Fred, me and Bob Barnett, worked with Fred getting that sand, 'cause they had a pile of sand on the other side by the ponds. It's two ponds across from that Victory Elementary. I thought we had to get a, a bond for the ENS, and, um, keeping the place that the sand was hauled off.
You know, there was some other property, it looked like to me, that could've been utilized for that staging area that wasn't directly in back to the, the houses.
A bit of, of a challenge.
But anyway, that's...
That's between contractors.
That's, that's Cal's other barn at this point.
That's right.
And we're not, we don't get invited into discussions between two...
Yeah, I, I know that.
Private parties.
I'm just, it's quality of life for those people there, and they pay taxes, so they should have a voice.
Yes, sir. But please understand, you know, we're gonna work hard to try to, to solve the issue, but we may, at the end of the day, not be able to, to do it.
Yeah.
We gotta do it within what's allowed by law. And believe you me, I mean, what time did you leave last night?
Nine.
Yeah. She's working on this at nine o'clock last night. We're talking about it la- and we, so for about an hour after the, and I'm not trying to get a medal in that, but we're taking this seriously, folks.
Okay.
All right? Um, the next thing is a briefing on the status of Victory Village. From time to time, you've asked me individually, uh, what's the deadlines, et cetera. And so, thought it would be good, and very useful, because you have different tenures on the council, and you may, this will help refresh your memory, to start almost at the beginning of time on this project. And Patrick and Mallory will, um, handle this. Mallory?
Yeah, good man. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is a timely briefing. Uh, it's not directly related to the rezoning. It's on your agenda, uh, later tonight, uh, but it is part and parcel of those properties out there around Victory Village. So, um, if you have any questions as we go along about what these things are, please stop me. I'm gonna go through it kind of quickly. This is a lot of years to cover. Uh, obviously, you'll have the presentation to take away with you, and any questions and follow-up information you may need, um, you know, the manager will be happy to let us know, and we'll, we'll produce more for you if necessary. Starting back in 2003, um, and Mallory's, uh, not been entirely directly involved with the project, but as many of you know, she's been with the department a long time, and she was here then, so she's our historical, uh, knowledge.
She's getting old.
Yeah. You're right. We're for better. You're right.
She's matured.
So, in 2000, excuse me. In 2003, the Economic Development Authority issued a request for qualifications for the construction of a business park on a portion of the site of the former Fairwood Homes. Business park in line with, uh, which has been built out at Cavalier and, um, others around us in the region have done. Those RFQs were due in April. A short list was developed, and a formal request for proposals was issued with a June deadline. And as a result of that process, in August 2003, uh, the city got its master developer, Victory Crossing Developers, which is actually their, their formal name. So, moving into 2004, the Economic Development Authority and the developer executed a business park acquisition and development agreement, essentially a contract. In June, uh, the city, the Economic Development Authority, the development, and the Commonwealth of Virginia executed the MOU for TCC. So, um, bid a business park, went through qualification processes, got a developer, and along came TCC. Uh, and the city shifted gears a little bit to make that work. In January of 2007, city council amended its zoning ordinance to create a mixed-use zoning district, uh, that allowed for residential retail and office development. In March of that same year, uh, the property was conditionally rezoned from business park and industrial to the city's only mixed-use employment center. So, you amended your zoning ordinance in March, uh, the developer came in and got a rezoning for that. And those conditions, uh, were proffered, uh, the zoning itself, so everything that's in that only MXEMP district, the design standards, and the master plan with road network. And, uh, you may recognize and remember, we've come up against this issue in the past. That drawing that we didn't put a copy of in here, but you're all familiar with, that shows the network, the building layouts and otherwise, that was proffered to you, and you accepted it. So, any substantial changes to that plan are tantamount to or require a rezone.
Do you have a copy of the design standards with you?
This is a color copy, front and back, uh, of the design standards, and this is what it looks like, single copy. It's a hundred-plus pages, and it deals with, um, pretty pictures of typical street sets, bike racks, landscape designs, uh, and all the textual material that goes into that, very much like you might see in, in your zoning ordinances. Uh, and this document was put together by the developer and proffered to you.
Yeah. And so, they've become conditions of the rezoning. And so, for them to change, and he's gonna cover this, if you, if the developer wants to change any of the proppers, he's gotta go back to the planning commission and to city council.
And actually, one extra step first, they have to go get the EDA to co-sign that In 2007, uh, the TCC Portland Campus Agreement was executed. In June, an acquisition and development agreement, uh, the one with the master developer, was completely rewritten, uh, to allow for mixed-use and the TCC campus. So, this is where the shift was made, from a traditional-style business park that the city had envisioned out on this property, into a more traditional neighborhood design, um, town center sort of flavor, um, much as, as had, was being built in other localities around us. In August, the developer did their first takedown of 6.87 acres. In November, a right-of-way plat was recorded, and Mallory has a map that shows the various takedowns. But the first, the first lots that were purchased, red is what the developer owns now, blue is what the EDA maintains ownership of, and green is what was conveyed to the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, these two lots right here on Victory were the first ones purchased by the developer. And I don't cover it in the PowerPoint, but there was a takedown schedule.
Those are the 6.8 acres, those two, right there.
Yes, sir. These two right here.
That's right.
So, the takedown schedule that's in the contract, um, had the developer purchasing lots, required to purchase lots on a regular basis, and the schedule also required, within a certain period of time after that purchase, that the developer start construction on those lots. So, takedown lot, 12, 18 months later, start building, take down more lots, start building. In December, a declaration of protective covenants and conditions, uh, was recorded. It's pretty standard on a master development. In 2008, uh, the city agreed to assist the developer by allowing them to access revenue-sharing funds for a portion of the entry road. Uh, there was no cost to the city. These were state revenue-sharing funds. The developer put the match up, but they were state funds that went into this project.
To get into TCC?
Yes, in part.
Full of knowledge.
In July, the developer bought another 11.124 acres. That's the piece that, uh, has traditionally been considered for the multifamily component of the project. This lot and this little lot here, and that lot there. So, now the developer owns this and this.
What happened to the 12 months of taking down and building and all that?
In October, the developer requested the planning commission review the zoning district and consider changes to facilitate the development. So, uh, the developer came in, they were having, uh, difficulty, uh, in their marketing, uh, as, um, according to what they were hearing in the marketplace, the zoning ordinance, uh, was requested to be changed. And in January, uh, the city council agreed to do that for the developer. So, your only MXP, uh, MXEMP district, uh, you went back and amended at the developer's request. Following that, uh, there was a requirement, obviously, now the DEA and the developer modified their protective covenants to, to, um, be in keeping with that. And in May, the first phase of the infrastructure plan, uh, was executed. In July, it was, it, some amendments were made to it. And in August, the developer bought three more acres. Um, this parcel here on the corner, um, by your access to the interstate, parcel number three. Which, and I'll cover it in here subsequently, is one of the, is the parcel that transferred to Lucas Hospitality.
What were we selling that for acre? Did they vary, or did we give them...
CPI, uh, and, and that's one of my closing slides, but the developer has acquired about 25 acres in total, uh, and paid the Economic Development Authority a million dollars. So, in round numbers, 40,000 an acre. The purchase price where they had to take down, uh, acres today is up to 43,800 an acre. So, started in the high 30s, now it's in the low 40s.
So, we did a revenue share of construction of portion of the entry road for 840,000?
Yes, sir.
With state.
That was state money.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't city money.
What now, Jack?
All right. So, January, um, oh, I missed a, an important, um, thing in here. I actually started working for you then.
Oh.
Did you put a little star behind that? Uh, in 2010, a big day, um, I had been here, I think, three months, and I got to join you all at the opening of, uh, that beautiful community college campus that continues to grow and be a fantastic attribute for the city. Um, July of that year is when, um, when I got a little bit aggressive about the, the contract not being kept up with. So, uh, yes, we continued to have the developer taking down property. The developer wasn't in compliance with the agreement. So, we went into the contract, the Economic Development Authority, to clean it up. We made a lot of minor changes, but one of the major changes we made was to extend the takedown schedule for two years, so didn't require them by contract to purchase any more lots. Uh, and then amended the developer's principles. Michael Haas, uh, sold his share of this project to a gentleman named Steve Lucas, no relation to the senator.
Can I just interrupt?
Yes, sir.
What would allow us to continue to allow the developer to take more property when they haven't done what they should've been doing?
Right. Good question. The, I don't have a good answer for you. The authority was, was, the takedown was contractually required. The developer came in, uh, they were, of course, telling us all along, "We're working with clients. We need, you know, this, that." Um, they were paying for the property, and the authority allowed them to do this.
Yeah, in actuality, he was following what he had to do according to the, uh, EDA.
Correct.
And the development agreement.
Well, and I think there was always, uh, you know, X, Y, Z company is interested in building this, but I need this corner to make that happen.
Yeah.
But, and he was required to buy anyway. I mean, there's always been, "I might have this, I might have this, I might have this."
Yeah. It was to facilitate development, uh, people he said he had on the hook.
In January of 2011, uh, the developer sold those three acres, that corner lot I pointed out to you earlier, to Lucas Hospitality, uh, $4 million. And in May of that same year, uh, the Economic Development Authority began work on detailed concept plans for a company called Ripley Heat Wall, which was proposing an apartment complex out here, lot two, right up next to the community college. December of that year, developer buys another five acres, which is now these two lots here, number four, and they now own everything in red.
Eight-eighty.
It looked like he'd made his money there in January to buy everything else there.
Yeah, yes, he did.
That's right, he did.
He, he netted eight-eighty.
In 2012, um, city council amended the approval process to change to plans in the MXEMP districts and amended the zoning map to modify the concept plan which closes Campus Drive. And you may remember, that's when they came in, they said that the apartment guy needs, or gal needs this. Uh, we need to make these minor changes. Um, as we talked about earlier, they can't, and staff can't just approve those minor changes. So, they went back through essentially a rezoning process to make those changes, and built a little bit of flexibility into the zoning at the time U-council did, that allows the planning director a minor amount of discretion in, in moving the road ways, but, but not, not wholesale changes to the plan. In August, uh, the Economic Development Authority approved a second amendments, and that's, at this point, we're in default again. Remember, we gave them the two-year extension?
Yeah.
We stopped the, the further takedowns? They're in default again. Those two years are up. So, EDA went back in and amended the contract, uh, one more time. Um, this time, uh, we put a halt altogether to takedowns. There will be no more purchase of property in that project, no more of that blue out here, uh, unless and until they build 250,000 square feet of development in accordance with the master plan on that property. And we gave them until August of 2015 to do that. So, I know it seems like 2015's a long way away. It's 16 months. They have to be under construction on 250,000 square feet by that time. So, uh, it is timely to give you this update, uh, this evening. And, uh, as part of that, we stipulated that any other default in the contract, uh, would be deemed cured. Also in 2012, uh, the Economic Development Authority approved detailed concept plans building elevations, just like Ripley Heat Wall plan, for SL Nussbaum. In October, we came in, we being staff, came in, and let you know that we understood that project was intended to be low-income housing tax credit.
And this is where I come in.
Yeah.
And I remember the library.
Oh, it should be a bigger still.
Come on.
Even another star, right?
We just got a pin, we can put an asterisk. Uh, and you said, uh, "No more..."
That's right.
"No more, um, at all. Uh, let, let the housing authority take..."
Of course, meeting Danny and I attended, after the election before we were sitting...
I know, and I remember where you and I were sitting.
Thought y'all gonna catch on fire.
Yeah. And so, we take that message, it was clear to us, and we send that to the developer.
Okay. And Mr. Rowe did that immediately after that meeting. Uh, letters back and forth between the developer, the SL Nussbaum folks, and in January, uh, the manager sent you a memo with some, some copies of those letters, letting you know that, in fact, that project would not be going forward. So, in March, uh, the developer came in, uh, met with Mr. Rowe and some of his staff. Uh, I believe I was in that meeting as well. Uh, and then came to you in a work session to request amendments to the master plan and design standards. Again, you may recall, they came in, they said, "We don't have the flexibility. We need to be responsive to today's marketplace. We can't build precisely according to the master plan. We have challenges with this document, and we have challenges with the zoning district."
And request, you really need to put that in quotes, because it wasn't a formal request they did not have. Remember, Bill Hudgens got involved. Bill was not associated with the project. Um, Bill did the city center at Oyster Point in Newport News. And his message was, is that any master plan that you have needs to be responsive, uh, to the market. Your conclusion is, is that, okay, we... Your conclusion is, is that, okay, we understand that, we're not going to lower our standards, though. We're not going to take the first thing that comes along.
Thank you. Also in that month, we had realized, a couple months beforehand, that when we amended the agreement the last time to bring the developer out of default, extend the timelines out into August, that because he had transferred that parcel to Senator Lucas, Lucas Hospitality, back in the previous timeline, we had not extended those timelines for her. So the deed restrictions that transferred with the property would have had her subject to the repurchase provision and the other clauses in the contract as well.
So now she's on the same schedule as him?
Yes, sir.
Next year, they need to.
Both the EDA and council put them both on the same clock, which was the fair thing to do.
Right. April of 2013, city agreed to provide the developer $720,000 in revenue sharing for Elliott Avenue, and staff, a number of us, Mr. Baldwin, Mr. Bruce, myself, Mr. Hartley, Mr. Godfrey, and I may be missing one or two others.
Was that state money as well?
It's the same pot of money, yes, sir.
Yeah, that grant money, okay.
So they came in, they told you.
Where does Elliott factor into this?
I hadn't seen $720,000 improvements on Elliott. Elliott cuts right by the old B-low.
This, Justin, James may be able to better tell you, this hasn't started yet.
No, I know it hasn't.
I drove down there a few weeks ago, I hope it hadn't started.
Well, it's not there.
Where does Elliott run into Victory Village?
It's on the backside of the backside.
Right at the backside of it.
Yep. Now, remember, I mean, we're saying that this is state fund, but there's an opportunity cost, there's an opportunity cost with anything that you do. If you spend it on this, you can't spend it on that. So if you put it in this project, you can't put it someplace else, although maybe.
What were the improvements with that matching dollars there? What were they supposed to do to Elliott, do we know?
To build Elliott. Correct, Jim?
Yeah, the road doesn't exist right now, so they're actually building the road with all the utilities and drainage that goes along with it.
What would that money be used for if we weren't doing this?
Probably go to another locality, we didn't have any projects that qualify.
So that money's already, they're already getting that money, right?
We've found the agreement for it, so.
Okay, let's say.
Where is the money at?
Say we get around to August 2015, none of this has been done, how's that work?
You know, that's a very good question.
There we go, good question.
That's a very good question. Let us research that. Because that brings in V-DOT. V-DOT, you know, we wouldn't want the money to stay here and say, okay, and this won't be the first time it's happened in the state. I mean, good grief.
The reason why I ask, because if they're not going to perform, are we going to be on the hook? We need to reverse that, you know, you follow me?
Yes, sir. I said, good question, yeah, very good question.
Yeah, but the money, the state still has the money?
Right, it's the state's money.
Okay, but who's?
But it's available for us, and if they're not going to use it right here.
Right.
We need to make sure.
Is it only for construction or any road repairs?
It's specifically for Elliott Avenue, it's earmarked for this specific project.
Well, I know what that's supposedly for, but what could it be used for? Typically, the state has a revenue sharing program, and it's for construction of roads. It's not for maintenance. Okay, so it has to be new construction? It's for construction of roads, yes, sir. Okay, gotcha.
And has to be matched.
They also do maintenance, though. You have revenue sharing for maintenance, but if that allows, it's not full funding.
You said it had to be matched. Has to be matched.
This is, timeout, guys. This is, this comes from the Bird Act, and when the state took the roads into the, all the roads in the state, got Virginia out of mud, they started maintaining county roads. And they established a road construction program, which they called the 50-50 Plan, which was essentially revenue sharing, where the local government would put up 50 cents, and they would put up 50 cents for new construction. The concept for decades was to build roads, and this is the evolution of that program.
Gotcha. And the master developer will be matching these funds.
But those funds is not in the developer's coffers. It's state money set aside and allocated for that when he needs it, right?
That's why it's not in his bank account.
Right, I think that was a good question, right.
Ours.
So the developer came in, asked you, would you be open to them going through a rezoning process to make the changes we talked about? In April, we started meeting with them. In October, they held a small community meeting out at Bydaway, invited in some of the churches, the civic leagues and others in that area, held that meeting, presented some proposed master plan changes, and then came back to city staff and said, okay, we're ready for you to make these changes. And that's when we reminded them, again, this is a rezoning, if you want those changes, you need to make a formal application in the city. We haven't seen those changes yet, or that formal application yet. The developer also announced in October that Autumn Care is considering relocating to one of the option parcels, to an option parcel.
Technically, it's outside of Victory Village.
Where is that, is that McLean back there?
The Economic Development Authority owns an additional 30 acres.
Come this way.
The Economic Development Authority owns an additional 30 acres here, that is not officially part of the contractual arrangement that exists out here. However, the developer was given an option to purchase that property. So the developers come in, they've said, we have a tenant, we have a client, we have somebody who's interested in half of this piece, and that is in front of you this evening later for rezoning.
But it's never been viewed either by the EDA or the city as part of the Victory Village per se.
Okay.
Nor by the developer.
And that could be.
That's Autumn Care in West Haven?
Yes, sir.
We're about, almost done?
We're almost finished. So in December, the developer gave a draft contract to the authority for the purchase of that. And that brings us to just summary of where we are today. The developers purchased 25 acres from the authority for a million dollars. Both Lucas Hospitality and the developer are currently in compliance with their contracts. However, the developer has to begin construction on 50,000 square feet on those 25 acres by August of 2015, and Lucas Hospitality must begin construction of 36,000 square feet on the three acres on the corner. The developer is working on a formal request to amend the proffered master plan to elaborate the flexibility, as we talked about, although we haven't seen an application. And both the authority and the council at your work session said, we're open to looking at what you want to put in front of us. Not a guarantee of approval, but tell us what you want to do, and we'll tell you what we think.
Was this helpful?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, we have one more thing. Think about your, I have told you that we have declared war on ugly, ugly in the city, and we're trying to beautify the city. We talked about it last night, as part of our code enforcement, our neighborhood advancement program. Last year, we had, in the spring, Pretty Up Portsmouth. Last month, we told you that we're building layers on top of that by expanding that to the Keep America Beautiful campaign, to keep Portsmouth beautiful. And so in keeping with what we did last year with a spring cleanup, we want to brief you on our cleanup campaign this spring, this month. And Donna's going to do that, all right? This will be quick.
The brief briefing, brief briefing. Kidding me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and everybody in the room. We have some great things planned this year, but I want to give you a little overview about what's been happening with some beautification initiatives. Let's go back to last year. We kicked things off with beautification issues with Pretty Up Portsmouth. Last year, we partnered with the Portsmouth Rotary Club with Paint Your Heart Out and the Great American Cleanup, and we called it Pretty Up Portsmouth. That event was wonderful. We got lots of wonderful feedback, lots of volunteers. That day was April 20th, we had 450 volunteers. That included business owners, military, schoolchildren, businesses, city employees, and civic leagues. We collected 4,720 pounds of litter. Seven houses were painted, and you can see the volunteer hours, if we had to pay somebody to pick up all that litter, what we did in just those few hours. Because of Pretty Up Portsmouth, we've done a lot more since then. And since then, we started a curbside recycling program. The Department of Neighborhood Advancement was created. We're going to be hosting, once again, the Great American Cleanup. Throughout the year, we do household hazardous waste disposal events, electronics recycling, and document shredding events, Clean the Bay Day. We're going to be launching the Adopt a Spot program very soon. We're also a member of the HR Green affiliation with the Planning District Council, and America Recyclers Day in November, and improved holiday decorations for downtown. And I know you're all wanting to know more about the Great American Cleanup. Well, you know what, I'm going to tell you about it. It's going to be April 12th, from 9:00 to noon. We're going to have several things going on. We're going to have litter pickup throughout the city. We're going to kickoff down here at the seawall. But also, we're going to be having a household hazardous waste collection, document shredding, and electronics recycling event. And this year, we move it around the city. This year, it's going to be in Craddock and Aston Square. So this is a time for everybody to clean up, you know, get all those paint cans out of your house that you don't know what to do with, pesticides, time to have your documents shredded securely, you can actually watch them get shredded, and electronics recycling. Pretty much anything with a plug. Now, please don't bring your refrigerators and your freezers, we don't want big things like that, but definitely TVs, monitors, computers, cell phones, anything like that will be taken on that day. We still need volunteers, so, you know, we want you to let everyone know, we want civic leagues to be involved, maybe they can do their cleanups on that day as well, and.
Now, Donna, that date is also in conjunction with the Paint Your Heart Out.
Right.
So we'll still all be on the same day.
Yes, and actually, it's a little earlier this year. We normally have it around the 20th, but that's Easter weekend, and so we ended up having to move it back. But anyway, we're excited about all the things that are coming up in Portsmouth. And, can you have the lights? Just, I know you're really anxious to get started picking up litter.
We're going to harm you.
I brought you.
Very own.
The police chief may fight crime, I fight grime. It can now be yours. You can use this any day of the year, though, it doesn't have to just be on this day. And for the volunteers, we'll be handing out litter grabbers to them as well, in bags and stuff. So for more information, you know, they can call 393-8663 to register, and we hope we get volunteers, and we hope to see you all out here picking up litter and participating at these events.
Good job, Donna. I love that.
I love you.
Thank you in advance for being out there on April the 12th. You were out there today helping toss.
That's right.
That concludes, you have any reports you want to.
Any liaison reports?
Okay.
Want to go in to close?
I moved to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose. Discussion concerning the disposition of publicly held real property in the Victory Village area of the city, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the city as prohibited under subsection 8.3.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
You're right.